Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock, so we call this December 6th, King Lynn County Land Commission meeting to work. We have roll calls.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Slitter?
Here.
All right. Next on the agenda, review and adoption of the meeting agenda for tonight. Have we all had a chance to review it? Any discussion? But our team motion to?
So.
Good second. Right, permission carries. And number four on our agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from November 1st meeting.
Chairman Slitter, if they do a roll call. Mr. Greenwood? Mr. Callen? Mr. Wagner? Chairman Slitter?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
So item number four, review and approval of the minutes from the November 1st meeting, because everyone had a chance to review the special. I do have, I do have one thing with this, I actually have a sort of a concern, actually, we you know, and I went back to some of the other minutes from previous meetings as well. They're they seem to lack details. Especially as compared to meetings, well, like the board supervisors or the EDA, we've had joint meetings with them, typically have minutes of theirs that we can review, and they're usually 10 or 12 pages long. Ours, when I go back on this and I'm back to our past few meetings, and these meetings are maybe two pages long. I know that in this one, in this case, the meat and potatoes of the last meeting was agenda item number seven, which is the topic of the zoning map, the discussion with TCO and PUD, and then the agenda number eight was new business, where we discussed the minor subdivisions and possibly the lives of ordinance. There's nothing in here, details bars on one of this, and I think we need to see that kind of detail in our minutes, because there's a lot of times that I know that myself, I go back through and I want to see, I want to review what we've discussed, who said what, what was the outcome, so we can be refreshed and prepared. A lot of us don't have time to sit through hours of previous meetings to go back over that stuff. But the biggest details in our entire minutes from last month is from the public hearing that we had, which was a pretty simple passage of that, so. I'm in favor of a motion to deny the minutes as presented. I would like to see them re-s submitted at our gym where meeting with more details. Discussion.
I agree that it does sound like, like you said, it just seems like it's got bullet points of the I am A, B, C, D, and it just says what was done, but like I said, no description of any of the stuff we talked about, like I said, we talked about a few things, and now I remember that you mentioned in detail, like some of it was heated, that kind of stuff, that happy one, but at least something about the discussion between this and that, but when I go forward, look into this a little more, something like that, I agree, you're right, there's no, just there's the title, and that's it, so I agree. Maybe go back room, get a little more detail, and I mean, I talked to our, my chair, my secretary of board, and she's willing to maybe come up with some she has some training materials and stuff that might be helpful, and maybe going back over the minutes, so you don't have to listen to them every second to try, if you didn't get the notes. As good as you'd like to, maybe it might be able to help catch a few of the pertinent points moving forward.
I think that'd be helpful, I think it would help with our current meetings go more smoothly if we're not backtracking, trying to figure out what was said something six months ago, it's a lot easier to pull minutes from that and revisit it and clear it up pretty quick. Rather than having similar discussions every single time and only moving, you know, things a few inches forward, so. Is any other moves on that?
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would like to request that be corrected or added to the minutes from the last meeting was a conversation we had regarding the minor subdivision ordinance, where I stated I had a conversation with Chief Reeves about some of the concerns for the minor subdivision ordinance. And apparently, that conversation never made it into our minutes, and there was some question about if that conversation ever took place or not. So I would like to have that added to the minutes of the last meeting. And from the minutes of this meeting, I'm going to make sure that it makes it in there that last Tuesday at one o'clock, the county administrator, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Reeves, and myself had a meeting at one o'clock to discuss those, and it was determined that 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 meeting and what was discussed actually did take place, so I would like that in the meeting minutes as well.
What's, do we need a motion for them soon, or we need a motion to deny?
Right.
Is somebody willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we ask the staff to provide more in the future, and we can go back and take another look at the minutes of last meeting.
Okay, all right. The motion is to to ask staff to provide more details to our previous meeting and our next meeting for approval and to to provide more details going forward, and it's been properly seconded. Can we get a?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Callen?
Hi.
Chairman Slitter?
Hi. Okay.
Just point of order, Mr. Chairman, just want to make sure maybe the clerk would know specifically, we voted to get a little more clarification, but do we need to have a specific vote saying to not that we didn't pass the minutes? I'm just asking, I don't know, because.
You could table it until the January meeting.
Okay, okay, well, let's make a.
I'll make that, though, you're not making a motion that we table the minutes until.
All right, so we are, a motion made to table the minutes to our next meeting. Okay, secondary to that. They're properly seconded, if we could have a roll call of it.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Callen?
Hi.
Chairman Slitter?
Hi.
All right, next on the agenda, public comment period, this is an opportunity for speakers. Three minutes per individual or five minutes per group, this is for non-public hearing matters, and we do have a public hearing tonight that CUP, that's zero three dash two two for our applicant, John W. Foley. And that is next on the agenda, so this is for any matters that don't have to do with that. Do we have anybody wishing to speak? I'll open up the I'll open up the comment period. Is there anybody online?
No, so. Nobody that has signed up.
All right. Again, there's no one wishing to speak who want to be public comment period, I will close the public comment period. Next on the agenda is the public hearing, this is once again CUP dash zero three dash twenty-two. Our applicant, John W. Foley, applicant John W. Foley, the second trustee, Ms. Brown.
Okay, so tonight's request for Mr. Foley is to operate a short-term business rental on property that he owns at fifty-one forty-nine, on Lake Huron Road. The property is a currently a single-family home, has three thousand three hundred seventy square feet, and is on actual thirteen point five forty acres. And it is RRR, which is residential. Here's a G I S view of his property. And this is the zoning map, which shows one side is RRR and the other side is AC, agricultural conservation. Here's a site plan that he submitted. And here are signatures out toward the water, we're trying to get them all those sides. Let us look back. Very property. That's the front of the home. That's the entrance off of the main room. Now with this, and our review, we do have several conditions. If you consider approving the application, we suggest that these conditions be part of the CUP. One is screen all potential guests and bring to the following, board gambling, that's group of guests under twenty-five. Maintain a ring doorbell camera from the property. Keep the nightly rate at four over five hundred dollars per night, and like, we get along with at least two nights. For the guests to agree to the rules, putting maybe above. We knew all trash from property immediately, on each rental, or more frequently, should a rental appear to be able to see the property maintained at all times, including our local businesses for housekeeping, landscaping, and other maintenance. The applicant will maintain a business license, all gas will work in the driveway, which can comfortably hold all gas vehicles. The property will meet all building codes for rental unit, and the applicant understands that the county may inspect the home once per year. The property address will be placed in a position that it is a plain legal from the road. There will be no recreational vehicles, no occupancy less than overnight. The property owner's name and telephone number will be posted. The principal guest will be at least twenty-five years of age, the max number of adult guests is limited to six. And the applicant will remit any applicable lodging tax to the county. Some of these are in ordinance, and some of them will also be provided by the applicant.
Questions? Mr. Greenwood?
That's one, you said some of them did come from the owners, so they're okay with all of them?
So they met everything the county required, and then went above and beyond that?
Yeah.
This is great, do you know if the county has a transient occupancy tax for lodging? Hotels or?
I'm sure we do, I don't know what it is, but with the short-term rental and so forth, they should have a tax for.
I was, I was looking earlier on what kind of website, I could not find anything, but but I did not see anything on there, but possibly is, if that's something that.
Well, they're requiring a business license, so they, they definitely have to pay on the gross receipts, but there should, because of the type of business, I imagine they might have to pay that additional tax. I would have to double check with the commissioner to make sure, but.
I know that it's not a it's not an industry that's widely utilized in the county, and certainly if our recreation departments continue to grow and maybe bring in land, so give some developments that create a little bit more of a destination market here, then they might consult, and we just we want to take a look at shore up, at least make sure it's a place before allowing, if we allow this, those others in the county. Staffs, I'm pretty close to that. Does he have any comments?
We don't know, I'm not talking about that, we have had a few callers, people with concerns. So there may be some additional people that would like to speak tonight, so.
That actually is going to be one of my questions, I think, at least a couple of the just landowners right here, so I don't have idea what they have to say.
One question I'm gonna share is that mentioned in here, twenty-five guests, but six have to be adults, is the twenty-five?
No, age twenty-five, no one under the age of, the primary guest has to be at least twenty-one. It's the max occupancy for adult guests is six, and it doesn't include their small children, but for adult guests, the max is six.
One question I had, with the chairman. We limit to six guests, but does that, if someone is running for a month, does that limit them to only six guests, or can they have additional people in?
Our ordinance states six guests. Adult six boat guests.
Said all they can have.
At any one time.
Miss? Sure, I'm just want to tell you ahead of the start, that's tonight, the definition of short-term business rentals, and applicants do know all these rules.
Yes.
Oh, that's, make sure, because like you said, there's a lot of stuff in there.
I don't have anything at right now, but certainly after the comments, if there's anything happening, and I'll sort of.
At this time, we will open up a public comment period, going to the public hearing, CUP dash zero three dash twenty-two. Those who wish to speak, one opportunity or three minutes per individual and five minutes per group. At this time, I'll open the, here. You could state your name and your address.
Chairman, board, my name's Ron, my neighborhood, and address is fifty-two. We have lived in this neighborhood for twenty-eight or twenty-nine years, it was developed by Chesapeake operation. It's a twelve-watt subdivision that has always been a private residential subdivision. The big concern that I have with this is, you heard all of the requirements that the county may have put on it, or that the owner may have volunteered to do, but the owner is not there. The owner is not there when these people are running. I have had someone trespassing on my property, they came, and I stopped her on the road on my driveway, and I said, may I help you? And she said, I'm fine, I said, no, may I help you? And she, I said, you're trespassing on my property, and she come from next door. I've had them set up games on my property, frisbee golf. I came in, didn't know anything about it, just see this game, you know, it's a stand that's this high, and has chain links that you throw through, goes on my property. We don't know who these people are, that they meant to. I don't know that they even know who the people are that they meant to. I'm concerned about the safety of the neighborhood. It's one thing if it's a B and D, the B and D person is actually there, the owner of the property is actually there. In this situation, the owner is not there, as you heard, the county is saying, okay, you give the name and the telephone number. But these people live in this lot here, that's where their home is. Is it going to fall on me to try to police it? That's not fair to me. Is the sheriff's department going to have to come by there every so often, patrol the area? I don't know. You know, they did, I will give them this, they did advise us that they were having a small wedding there. They had like twenty, twenty people. But the concern that I think everybody in the neighborhood has is that this has been a private residential area for over thirty years. And now we're having someone try to come into a subdivision, residential subdivision, and open an Airbnb or Verbo. And yeah. I don't know how you can bet who is going to be renting it, you don't see them face to face, you don't know who they are, you don't have information about it. And we, we are totally against. No disrespect to the locals. But, and I will tell you, James City County, my understanding, James City County and the town of West Point are requiring that under occupied house in these situations. So we are totally against it, as you, I don't know if you saw the slide, but the house that was just to the right, just to the right of the property was our house, and you can see the woods, so we're obviously totally against it, but.
Mr. Chairman, I made that question, that, is this subdivision a part, I mean, this property a part of the subdivision we're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Henry. My name is Henry Sullivan, and this is called In That Subdivision, that I was talking about. I do, been there for twenty-eight years. Mr. Bond ran it, and they were pretty much on the head, we all knew each other, all been neighbors forever. We look after each other's kids, we look after each other's dogs. And it's really difficult with somebody who's in, it's really, there were a couple of new people that are house nearby, and have to start new relationships. What Mr. Bond run failed to tell you is that of the twelve houses in this lot, or in the subdivision, the house next to him is now applying for application to do a Verbo or Airbnb. The house next to me, lot eight, is already doing it without obviously permission. And on lot ten, I think, or eleven, the old Mitchell house, they're doing the same thing now, so within just a quarter mile of road, I've got three of these facilities that are operating, and I don't know if Mr. Foley is actually doing it yet. I'm just far enough away to not see and hear, but I do know what the two next to me are. And I don't really complain about the noise, what I complain about is that when something happens, I have nobody to call, I have nobody that I can get hold of. I, should something happen in on my property, I'm responsible for those people that are next door. If they bring dogs, there's nothing I can do about it, if they bring twelve kids, who's going to stop? We're all in the river, most of these facilities that we're talking about have got boat houses. Most of these houses, all three of them in particular, have got boat houses, there are boats out there. These people are not exactly the client of students, or I have rented a place like this for who knows how much, several thousand dollars. And the boat is there, and I'm going to have a pretty good time with it. So just my objection to it, and try to raise the cognizance of you all, that there's more to it than just renting a house and visiting. A little more complicated than that, and it's not just one house, we're talking a whole pile of them. And if you all approve one, you're going to have to approve all, unless you've got some way of doing something that I'm not aware of, and there's a lot of houses on this river that themselves have sold, all business, obviously, I don't hate to see that happen. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Civil Rose. Out of the property at forty-nine eighty-five, Lake Huron Road, next to this property, also over four hundred and fifty acres across the road. My residence is thirty-six fifty-six Custos Melpon Road. When I first heard of this zoning, I thought, well, at least I have a huge between us to protect me from whoever's going to be next door. That hasn't always held up, but I can tell you, in the twenty years I've lived there, that I constantly having problems with neighbors that live there full-time, I have game cameras everywhere. Hunt Club helps me with poachers, trespassers, people that dump trash, dump dead dogs, and all sorts of things. To rent something of this house on the river to people that don't live here and don't know our voting laws, our fishing laws, our hunting laws, and may or may not care is frightening to me. I have certainly had my problems with people that don't know how to operate a boat, don't know the rules of the road. And I know there's been problems in the past in the neighborhood with with some of these rentals, with fireworks. I raise organic chickens on my property next door. Rules may say no dogs, but that doesn't stop anyone from bringing them, so I don't know if I will be able to free-range my chickens. In the meantime, then there's always, what I keep bringing up at some of these meetings, is the issue of enforcement. If you cannot enforce these zoning regulations or laws or rules, they just become ineffective. I've had serious problems with dog attacks, and have waited for at least for an hour and a half. Our county is long, it's difficult for them to cover the areas, and I don't want to be in a position to call the police on this, on these issues, so. I think it's really concerning also about property values. I'm a licensed real estate agent in Virginia, and I always bring up the example of if there's two identical houses on the market for the exact same price, and one is in a neighborhood of full-time residents, and one is all transient rentals, the short-term, which one would you buy? And I think that that's a question that we all need to ask ourselves before you consider this zoning change, so I'm against it. Like I said, I've been in the neighborhood twenty years, and don't want to see the neighborhood turn into these short-term rentals, where there's no one present to make sure that these enforcements are, can take place. Any questions?
Maybe you can come down, Foley. I appreciate everybody's comments and feedback, it's very helpful. Just want to like back up for a second, we purchased this house just sort of two years ago, and was not with the intention to Verbo the house, we walked as a second house for ourselves. And, you know, as a place that as our kids finish up the school, we can hope to, yeah, we love A two full time. So we, you know, spent all of twenty twenty-one living in the house, you know, probably fifty percent of the time. I worked in Richmond, a very new spent the whole summer there, et cetera. And we have fallen in love with West Point. It's an amazing community. And we want to share it with other people when we're not there. And that's when we decided to begin, you know, chase down this idea of Verbo the house. The, I think some of the concerns are very easily addressable and they're fair. You know, we do have a boat house. I have a boat, I have a jet ski. They're not accessible to, you know, anybody who rents a house. We don't allow for anybody to bring in their own boat to the house. That doesn't mean someone could bring a boat up the river and, you know, pull it on the dock, but we don't allow for that. We did get the, the feedback from Bonderon about somebody wandering off of our property and went to theirs. And, you know, that was an opportunity for us to just better communicate to, you know, potential guests, what the property line is, so that they don't, that doesn't happen again. And, you know, we talked about, there's a lot of concern fairly about what type of people are going to rent the house. You know, I think if that's what this community, if you get seven hundred dollars and ninety in that property, you know, it's a, it's a well-spanning citizen that's, that's able to rent that and they take good care of it. We're in every other week ourselves, you know, right behind them, see the property. We have a ring doorbell. We can verify the the size of the, you know, the people that are coming in. Ads, things like that aren't happening. It's, it's our property. So, you know, we do take very good care of it. Yeah. And the wedding was like, my mother-in-law got married on the property two, three weeks ago, which was even just a, a small payment event, so. I'm getting answering your questions, but I think I addressed some of the comments I counted down. I will add one other thing too, you know, I think, and being able to, if, if you have to, you know, Verbo the house, when we're not using it, it also allows us to, you know, invest more in the property. So you know, Joe Pallas, Aaron Wade, they come over here over the last few weeks to get some stuff, want to get done to continue to improve the property and target value and stuff. I had that.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. We'll do is we'll close the public comment area.
The owner has, can't stay up there. He's not part, he's not really part of the comment.
Okay.
We just need to close here so we can discuss and ask questions.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Bonderon has another statement. That's his likely response to the couple of things that he said, that's all. I'll wait one on land, maybe do some research. You'll need to come up to the microphone.
Very cool. One of the requirements on y'all's pose condition uses six of dollars. Here's a review that my wife found. Twelve adults covering three generations gathered had a wonderful time. Again, I go to, I think they have a fleet status. Then their ad on, online. If you have a boat or a jet ski to rent, please inquire whether they make arrangements to store and drop it in. They are encouraging people to do this. All ahead of time.
Chairman, I made Mr. Bonderon, you all have homeowners association?
The, no, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? At this time, I'll close the public commentary. Discussion. I do have one thing. You said you do, you do have a ring doorbell? Do you have any other surveillance equipment there to cover the grounds or anything like that?
I'm looking at a, a second exterior camera, but no interior cameras. That's, I mean, Verbo doesn't have a view.
Actually, I have a couple of questions. I guess I was really on the fence, particularly about the boat and jet ski issue because I, I think we all know that can present a lot of issues. If someone brings their own boat or jet ski, they're not permitted with the river, with the laws. You know, it's vacation time. It's time to have a good time and let rest. And I certainly understand that. What Mr. Bonderon just said about being on the website kind of contradicts what you said. Do you have any comment about?
Yeah, I mean, it's another opportunity to just kind of, yeah, to language. We, we don't need, again, you know, it's my own personal boat. I'm not making that available. I don't take it off the for lift, make a lift available, you know, to me. And with the water there, you're really not going to tie up the dock. I mean, the water will change just too much. The weight is too much. But what is, the message at the end was if somebody is going to use West Point, go out on that night, like, there's a public ramp that's available for them to use. And that just needs to be made more clear that that's what she's highlighting. You know, somebody wants to understand how they can get out on the water and what they can do. That, that's the information that she can share with them. Not more, we don't have a ramp at the house or anything either. So.
We have a boat shed just down the river from the house.
Say, I'm sorry.
Do you have a boat shed just down the river from the house?
We have, do we have a boat shed at the house? Yes, yes, we do. Yes.
What, what platforms are you trying to advertise or incorporate?
Only, only Verbo will go, you know, tested both. I mean, nobody is going to Airbnb to rent a vacation rental home. You know, Verbo is where they, where they do that. So that's already been on the platform for us.
Do they have a method of vetting potential guests? Do you have this chance to, I guess, any qualifications or anything like that ahead of time?
Yeah, so and, and I wish my wife here to speak a little bit more to that, but like, you know, similar to other platforms, whether it's, you know, Uber or anything like that, you're, you're acquiring rating and a number of ratings that you rent houses. So I don't think she's had a first timer, like the people that rented, and people who have been on the Verbo platform and rented in the past. And there's also, she has a process outside of Verbo. So where she, you know, additionally screens down and has a a more robust contract that they, they go enter into or where they. So.
Do you have experience on any other properties with short-term rentals?
Not with, not with short-term rental. Properties. And so.
I was just wondering, like I said, another contradiction that Mr. Bonderon said was that he saw them online. I had said that there's mainly that was over twelve. But of course, this has just come up to us now. Maybe he didn't know the rule was five. And it sounds like he said that there's other, although his neighbor said there's other people that do it too. And like, so the problem with the enforcement, did you, I mean, were you admits that you had twelve at one time?
Yeah, indeed. Again, my man, my wife manages that side of it. So she is, and she's an attorney by trade, she's a stickler for the rules, so. Yeah.
I was just wondering, like I said, if, if, I would ask you, if, like I said, if stuff's passed, some fast was moving forward. I mean, if somebody asked point blank, if this was to pass this board and with the questions that Mr. Bonderon and the other neighbors have said, how could you provide us with some sort of security or acknowledgement that you would diligently work to prevent those things from happening? Again, like I said, there's no, you tell the people where the line is, that I don't know if there may be a fence or, or make sure that there's no, you would, you know, see that twelve people, seven people, eight people come in, when the rule is for six, would you?
Yeah. Again, I think she has great communication with all of the guests. We abide by all of the Verbo rules and then she has her own contract outside of that. We have the ring doorbell and, and we're super diligent about monitoring as, as folks come in and understand, making sure that it isn't a big part, there's nothing crazy going on. There are times, you know, and I don't know this example, this review is an example that, or the example, excuse me. Then we had some folks that came into town for a family wedding. And the family was kind of spread all over the area. They used one of the wineries for the, the event. And the bride and groom has the families have dinner. And I were at the house, they asked if they would do that. And we said, yeah, absolutely. They're not gonna spend the night. They're just coming over to have dinner. We allowed them to do that. But anyway, I yeah.
Because you know, I was asking Mr. Graham about the rules. So you have, this is one of the specific statements that says, if you're, if three or more substantiated complaints included without limited to noise and excess trash or anything else about twelve-month period, you could lose this. So it's pretty severe. So I'm just.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
The concern I have is with, with the neighbors' impact compared to the past. And you were, you have been renting the house out.
Yeah, we, we started it this year. We learned about this. We paused and now we're going through these steps. The times we get rented, the taxes are, have been paid already. So now we're just trying to bring together license.
The wedding party was, was pent. That was a penthouse. It was not a penthouse. Is that correct?
That was our family, correct? Yes. Yeah, we've, we've been asked if people can rent it to, you know, get married on the property and have something. We've defined those for us.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah.
My biggest concern, it really is, is unfortunate, I guess, you know, how that not being on site does have concern for me. The only way to police is by the neighbors, really, I guess. And, and there has been some issues and obviously neighbors aren't to aren't taking to this very well, from what it seems. Either way, we have to either have the picture to approve, deny, or table this. So one thing I need to take into mind is that whatever we do, we need to keep in mind that potentially could be additional short-term rentals that will have to be consistent with what our provision would make here.
No, the county, the county stamp will not be enforced, cannot be enforced. But what we do have is provision that if we get three complaints, then we can either deny the permit, whatever it's explained in the permit. You know, we could do it based on that. There could possibility we could consider allowances based on the complaints. And if we get three complaints from the neighbors, then we would have to review it and possibly deny it. Other than that, I can appreciate what you want to do, but I can also appreciate what your neighbors' concerns are.
And I would just highlight that I'm, I'm very sensitive to that and or quickly remedy any situation that would, you know, come up. Obviously foresee any, but I think it's a tremendous opportunity to bring additional revenue into the, into, in here. I think it's all upside, so. And I'm not, I'm not an absentee owner, you know. I do, I do go there myself, so.
I just had one where you were mentioning that you, a lot of the people here are complaining on living here. You have lived here under COVID and mostly had the time, but are you doing this now for financial help and maybe want to end up moving there eventually when you retire maybe, or is it just?
I can't go over there, but we love the property. And, you know, we have we have two up in the house. The oldest is graduated from history next year. And then we've got a ten-year-old. And the, the trouble for us right now is like, you know, ten-year-olds are pretty integrated and full in sports and everything. And we want to retain property. We want to continue to come out and spend our free time here and then have that option available to us, you know, later, so.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna add, we, we, one of the comments was made, you know, whatever we decide here tonight or in the future at this, at this table, we're gonna be faced with this a lot more. We, we have four more wedding venues in the county. We, we know we already have some VRBOs that are being utilized in the county, whether legally or not. We know that that's going on. I personally have a lot of concerns over and, and I'm, I'm a business person, so I have my own properties. I understand where you're coming from. The, the enforcement side of it and just as we move forward, I think we're gonna see more and more of these. And we have to be very careful about the enforcement piece of it. Because I, I understand you, you've been here a few years and you want maybe to continue to be here, but also that these folks have been here a very long time as well. And we cannot overlook that. So for, for me, there's, I'll answer questions. Thinking that's, that's just my opinion. But I, it's a very crucial issue that I know we're gonna face in the very near future because we have four wedding venues right off the top of my head that are booked every weekend. There's a lot of talk of building short-term rentals to be able to help these people because right now they have to travel to Canixville or Tappahannock. And it, it's a meaningful, I know it's a meaningful. And I'm not opposed to them, but I'm also not insensitive to, to what the neighbors and what they've established. And we can't overlook that.
Certainly, there's, you know, if this were to be approved, you do understand your neighbors wouldn't be looking for anything possible to file a complaint.
I, I didn't know that coming into tonight, I didn't know how. But again, I, I can appreciate that and, you know, I'm certain that, you know, myself will make sure that, that, you know, it does not happen, so.
Also, I want to make a point. This is just the preliminary one. If, whether it passes with our board or doesn't pass with our board, it still gives the board a superbuy. So I wanted to let everybody know. I see people that they want to talk, but that part is over unfortunately, but you can get all your information together, all the questions that have come up from tonight, plus others, plus maybe have your wife here too, to be able to answer some of these questions before it comes to the next, to our board, so.
No, sure. And I think, you know, some of the business owners in the community would probably, you know, like to chime in. They have, you know, some greater reaction with our guests and it's driving additional revenue in the businesses. And, you know, at a time when I think, you know, businesses are, are, some of the time I saw, if you guys are on Facebook and you know, saw the lazy cow and the posts that they had here in the last twenty-four hours about business, like, you know, we want to do what we can.
I'm gonna say, we're not all in here just for the business and for the money. Like I said, now I agree with what you as a landowner, I'm the same way. I would like to be able to, I'm allowed to do it with my land, but as Kevin said, and everyone else, we're also familiar with Mr. Bonderon and all the neighbors that have been there forever. Everybody has rights. We all need to kind of work together. And I said, I don't know how it's gonna go, but sure.
Chairman, yeah, I have a couple of issues. We're, we're not, yeah, the public commentary is closed. But whatever concerns you have, we do ask that we We're, we're not, yeah, the public commentary is closed, but whatever concerns you have, we do ask that we come to the next hearing. That will be from the board supervisors so that you can make whatever points you need to make.
It might be helpful to hear Mr. Bondrun at this time.
Well, I'm making no exception. I mean, I know who he is. He really.
He represents the neighborhood and he's got something to offer that might help us.
I think we have enough information to. Yeah, I think we have enough information right now to, to work with. We just need a motion. Whether to do next, to socialize, on the direction to either approve, deny, or table this.
If you want to have a little discussion of ourselves. Frankly, I have, thanks depending on what we're doing here is the short-term rentals are something that we, I, I think the county has, has been open to and has encouraged. And you know, we're, I, I think it's helpful if you can do that. Even in here, tourists, tourism type things like Mr. Bondrun said, or like Mr. Follis said, they enjoy going to West Point. I'm not sure if they'll hook down in that area to enjoy going to West Point. They enjoy all the water out there. And that's good, but on the other hand, for those neighbors, if there is our disturbances and we have just gone through a recent issue where we had a lot of issues with neighbors. And if, if we get into that kind of situation again, it's it can be a stick of problems. And we do have the option, if there are three complaints, that we can shut down. But right, right now, I'm not sure which way to go.
Like to point out also, like you said, the owner said, this isn't a cheap round. This is pretty expensive. And they put in twenty-five hundred dollars to come to this. And he is, I wanted to point out that he was one of the ones that, once he found out he needed to do this permit, he meant got it unlike some of the other two. But I said, we don't have the authority to lease the other two, so they're getting away with it. He's trying to do the right thing. Like I said, he knows the rules. We set everything out. We set all these hard rules. We talked to the neighbors and we say, if that happens, he knows. But like I said, we've had problems with others in the past, but we can't use that for this either. It has nothing to do with this case. I'm, I was mixed too. That's still kind of, I don't know.
But you want, you want to say something? How, how we manage that, because we can't, the county can't be done. Yeah. Police can't enforce unless they get a call. So it's, it's a different situation.
I, I would say for me, there's, there's been some discrepancies here and who's right or who's wrong, though it's this irrelevant at this point to some degree, but for me, I think I need more information to, to really the things that have been said here tonight. One, one of the bigger concerns for me is the neighbor stating there's other properties in the neighborhood that are operating without our license. So for me, I think that the next thirty days would give me some time to look into that a little bit more. Because if that is going on, that's something we need to address.
We really shouldn't base his application on others. I just wanted to say that this is a specific application and it should have no bearing on what other properties are or what we might be able to do with the other properties. It's unfortunate, but like I said, we don't have the authority to do that. I mean, look into it, but it shouldn't affect this particular applicant's.
Yeah, the staff would have to have specific.
And we could go after that separately, but I would, that's just my opinion. I would think that that would be. I mean, I don't know what you all, but you lose.
Based on what we have all said, did you get?
I just, the, the only thing I would add is that there's a reason that there's large areas of the U.S. that are putting in policies as a zoning ordinance issue against short-term rentals. And that is a movement that is growing, not, not decreasing. Yeah, typically the short-term rentals are in vacation markets, vacation destinations. And, you know, that drives the economy in those, in those areas and it's widespread. And then as you move towards, you have more urban areas, you tend to have hotels that kind of win the day and they keep the short-term rental market, VRBO and Airbnbs and so forth kind of out of the picture. But I know that typically HOAs are one of the, what catches a lot of that and it keeps it from happening. And that doesn't exist in this, in this scenario. So I'll just say that.
Just make one point. I agree with Mr. Gom that it might be best to table, but I don't agree that for those particular terms that to deal with the other people, but let's say, I mean, I'd be willing to make a motion to table it to find more information to talk with Mr. Foley's wife. Exactly get some of the things that they've done now, talk with Mr. Bondrun again, some of the other neighbors that see some of the maybe fractures that may come with this particular, particular applicant, get all that information and maybe look at.
In other words, it might be an opportunity for Mr. Foley to coordinate with his neighbors and see what needs to be done, if it comes to a common agreement.
And one, one good thing is Mr. Greenwood pointed out that he is doing the, the charge that he's putting on the property is is not going to attract generally the wrong kind of people. And the minimum age is not that. That certainly helps, but I, I agree. I think we can go ahead and take that.
I want to make a motion. Okay. That motion is to table it for the next, to the next meeting.
That both parties, or all parties involved, develop more detailed information and answer to some of these questions.
Okay. Mission has been made as a practical. We don't need a second. Today, correct, correct. All right. Table it to the next meeting then, unless there's some.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Callum?
Hi.
Chairman Slitter?
All right. Next order of business is I'm receiving old business review of the zoning map, especially the TCO and B plan. Modern subdivision ordinance. Mr. Grant, do you?
We have, that was a more formal zoning act. Christine has been working on it this week, so I'm gonna turn that over to her and she can explain what she's done on these maps. So we've just started on one side. Making a whole week's there. I'm gonna turn it over to her.
The last meeting, if you recall, Sherry provided a list of properties along the three sixty corridor. And she talked about potentially rezoning some of the properties on one side of three sixty. And you all had asked possibly, we had the list, but we did couldn't see on three sixty where they were exactly. So I had Betty go in and we've actually placed them on a map on three sixty. So behind you all, you will see that map of the list that she had. And I've actually gone on there and I've put the current zoning of those parcels along with the future land use map of what they were potentially going to be rezoned. So I've blown it up on here as well. So you have it behind you and you also have it on here. So what I've done is so for instance, the twenty-two dash forty-one, and you'll see where it's actually zoned B one currently. Future land use actually has it staying as B one. So if you don't see any change, that means that it's going to stay the same. The one underneath of it, twenty-two dash forty E right now is zoned R one. The F means future. And so future means commercial. They don't say whether it's B one, B two, the future land use just had commercial. So it just goes on down through the parcels. And so twenty-two dash thirty-nine, go back up for one second, Margaret. So right now it's actually zoned B one, but it has a house on it. So I've kind of put that on there for you because I know you all had a discussion about properties that were previously zoned residential, but they have converted the property to a business zoning category. So I have those labeled on there for you as well. So it's all the parcels that were on that list that Sherry had went over where you can actually see it. And it's got the side streets on it. So Venture Road, all of the secondary roads. So you can see exactly where those parcels are. So if you had your packet from the last meeting, it's the ones that show the zoning classifications that had the list of all of the parcels so that you can actually now place where the parcels are. And you can take a look at it and see if you wanted to rezone any of those parcels. It gives you a better idea if there are any ones that you want to do that too. Because I know you all have talked about the ones with the houses on it. And potentially doing anything with those or any other ones that you potentially wanted to resign. So this gives you a better idea.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is that something that you can send to us as an email attachment?
I can send you this. It's gonna, as long as you have the version of a DB that lets you scale in and out. I'll make it larger like I can, then you can see.
I would definitely like to have that, so. Take a look at it. I'd like to do some satellite overlays and see what the land looks like and. Did you list whether or not, I don't see enough of it. I didn't look on there. Is it? Did you list whether there is a, whether it's like, say, for example, not listed as B one or B two, but it does have an, an actual business operating?
I didn't list that part. I just have.
A few of them that were made in your marriage, but it comes out, there's maybe something there that are businesses operating, but it's not a B one or B two.
And Sherry's list, she, on her list, she had it on the current use, if there was, if it was farmland, residence or office. So you have your list. And it's on there. And I didn't transfer that part. I only listed if there was a house on it and it was in B one.
Okay.
If it was, I've listed the post office, the American Legion, those are labeled on there. So you could kind of have your bearings of where you were on the map.
Our house is the big open one at the bottom where the two square ones, so where the long, looks like the road, that's the access road to it, isn't it? Like the purple has the triangle and a little skinny little line. Is that the access road? And there'll be big open piece behind all the purple ones. Is that the fire department? Go up a little bit. Yeah, that big one, the twenty-two thirty-four J, is that the fire department property? Because it's behind all that. So we have the rec center. The rec center is there. Oh, the little one, twenty-two thirty-three H.
Yeah, try to label, like I said, so you can get your bearings. I couldn't label them all, just to kind of.
Yeah, that's what, thanks.
The, Mr. Greenwood, in, in full disclosure, the bigger piece behind the fire department is a property that I own.
Next to the swamp that comes over the mine.
Make sure we have full disclosure.
And you did give that to the, to the manager as well. You gave him a list of all.
Yeah.
So I know Sherry had talked about giving some feedback if there were properties. So I don't know if y'all wanted to talk about that this evening, now that you kind of have a bigger picture of the parcels.
What, what was, we did, I guess you did one side of the highway.
With the list that she can give you all last time.
Okay, so I mean, we're just gonna do one side of the highway and look at the other side later.
Is that what you're talking? I think that's.
One side at a time, instead of trying to do all at the same time.
And I think a, a lot of the discussion was, and correct me if I'm wrong, one off of memory here, was to identify some of these properties. Then the first step is, does that person want to rezone? And would that person have the option, if they wanted to rezone, what would the tax base be on that? Would they still pay residential taxes until time when they sold to a potential business? Is that still part of the discussion?
I need to get with the commissioner, I need to ask if she could either kind of bury your bones in it or it's anyone who needs.
I, I will say, I, I have been to several of these properties that, that I know the owners of. And I've gotten mixed responses about maybe wanting to rezone. And the biggest concern is just over the taxes. No one wants to rezone. If it's gonna mean they pay more taxes. And then the, some of these properties here, some of the larger ones are in land use. So they certainly do not want to rezone while they're in land use. So we've got bigger those, those things out. If they're in land use, technically that kicks them out of land use if they rezone. And, and it's, it's over my head, but do we, do we have a mechanism? Or can we put a mechanism in place to say they can stay in land use if they are rezoned?
Yeah, the twenty-two thirty-one is in land use.
What's that?
The twenty-two thirty-one piece, that one's in land use.
Yes. And that's one of the bigger pieces.
Yeah. Yes, so that'd be a good, a good one, a good piece of information for us to have.
The CSU will come in and, and try to answer some of the, normally if it's in land use and you continue, that use, it stays in.
That's what I was saying too about the business. If they still live there, it doesn't change until they turn their house into a business, but we need to bear.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to answer.
Make much sense, but some of them don't make sense.
And the bigger piece is if they change hands or they're subtle. Also kicks them out of the news. So we, I mean, again, from, from the folks that I've talked to, you know, some of the, let's call it the, the five to fifteen acre parcels have a little different mentality than the one that had the two or three hundred acre parcel. And the biggest reason is land use. Now, our last discussions were, and there, there was some mixed feelings on this, but if, if we had a business that wanted to locate to the county, we currently do not have a whole lot to show them that is available. So it was an effort to, hey, here's a dozen, two dozen properties that are rezoned and cuts three, four, five months off of the process of somebody moving in. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, in my, in my motion, and in my motion is that I request that the item for the division of zoning map be tabled for following reasons. And then this review is to consider resuming AC parcels to V one, V two and nine. At parcels readily available, development, panel, perspective, developer, having to go through the expense and time involved with the zone. The issue with this approach, approach here is that once a parcel has been rezoned, the property can be developed for any purpose or use, or use allowed by law in V one, V two or high zoning districts. With no opportunity for input to manage development by either the finding commission or the authorities. I am comfortable that state will ensure development will be accomplished in accordance with, of all accordance. However, we lose the control of some potential property. we lose the control of some potential properties, allowing a rezoning of a conditioned use case. And just as important, the adjacent businesses or residential property owners should not have the opportunity to state their concerns or opposition due to increased traffic, noise, or other issues associated with some types of development, as public hearings would not be required for such a. For the each reason, some move that this item be tabled into such time as the planning commission can schedule emergency use metrics to consider the impacts that currently by right uses may have on the adjacent properties, and traffic impacts from uses allowed by right, such as a shopping center, automobile lot, auction house, or many, many others that are allowed by right in these metrics. So. That is my motion, and that motion to, hey, that must be.
I had my notes of table, and there were different reasons, um, one being, we are, you know, the commissioner this evening, not on this site, not even be with us. Uh, but the certainly, there weren't more discussion and, um, and if it's the use matrix that keeps us from feeling comfortable with somebody utilizing it by right, we need to get the use matrix corrected and, um, so, um. Any other thoughts on that?
I, I just have a question for staff, are these properties that, that you've identified here, are they all, um, that was identified to be in the, was it the twenty forty-two land use, do they all fall within that category?
Future land use map, this is where we've got this information. And tonight wasn't to make a decision, this was just a discussion. Um, it, it's going to take more, of course, more discussion for this, but, um, Christina had done the map, based on the list that we have provided, and she just wanted to give us more clarification on where these parcels are, and what is on each parcel.
We, we had some discussions, we were putting together a work session that we sit down and. And. Um, yeah. And we can put the use matrix, uh, as part of that discussion. I think that is something that we can tackle, um, quickly, rather than put it all, and then have a discussion or change, get changes. And that part of the same discussion, that rate of, that's reasonable and that stuff, so. Um, questions, man.
Yeah, and, and just, I would like to make a point here, just like the piece of property behind the fire department there, uh, the properties identified on that side of the highway. I do own several properties that fall within this, however, the, the vast majority, I mean, probably the reason would be to, just in case anyone having questions about that.
And if there's more information, I would know what you'd discuss and might, if you'd like to see, let us know, so we can have that in the work session.
I would definitely say use matrix, um, we'd love to have these maps. Here is one, um, a question would be, where, where's the do it, uh, I don't know if you've got a calendar.
I will make a check with the, um, county clerk and, um, see what she has available, um, maybe mid-January. We have a meeting on the third, um, so we can come back with some dates and, and actually just during the quarter.
Wait until that, basically.
Yeah.
We also have, um, in here, uh, discussion on the TCO and the HUD, uh, I think that, um, we agree that there's still some work that needs to be done on TCO, if you could add that to that work session as well. Um, and you should have a goal to finalize that, maybe there's some some tweaking, uh, on that, um, and, um, the, Sherry, you had a, um, given a few.
Yeah, I was actually going to try to, um, cover that in, in some notes, but it looks like it's still going to be hearing in January.
What was that?
Um, that is the, in the, in the properties, L C, um, at several parts of the silence.
I think we had originally discussed in our last meeting, because we thought this may would come for this meeting, we had, we had recommended maybe putting some of the solid stuff on the January. So now with that not happening, but is this going to all go to the January meeting, or are we going to?
I, I would say we need a table for a work session. So it would be in January, if we can, you know, down. And then we can have a joint work session with one supervisor to finalize and, um, and get a public hearing. The third thing on the whole business, um, uh, is the minor subdivision ordinance. Uh, once again, with Bonnie out here, I think that warrants a more discussion and unless anybody has any objections, kind of, yeah. Anything else in our business?
So we're going to try to, in a work session, a joint work session in January.
Not joint, just, just us.
Just the planning commission in January. We're going to go with these three items and these three items alone.
Plus the land use matrix.
Plus the land use matrix, and we're going to, yeah. We're going to try to come to some, some common ground on these items, and then at that point, does it go to the board or do we discuss it again at our next planning commission's anymore, is the, the work session override that?
We cannot make, uh, we can agree on the changes, but we cannot approve the changes until we have a public hearing and we're supervisors as a public hearing.
We need to have a joint meeting with the board supervisors to go over those changes before.
I would recommend it, um, just so they know what's coming up, and they may have comments as well on. That's where everybody, that we all the same age, when it does go to the public hearing functions.
Yeah. Um, next on the agenda, new business. Ms. Graham, the, have any thing?
Um, just a couple of things, and it's not all in business. Um, we're supervisors, um, at your number twenty-eight, meaning, uh, for the CEP for Liberty Hall. But that was the covered boat house and charter, if you remember, we. Um, they approved change the property maintenance code. Um, they upgraded the virginian maintenance code and removed, um, some duplication of boarding and sections that are ordinance. Um, and they also approved resolution to initiating an amendment to chapter eighty-six, um, and referring the amendments to the planning commission for the recommendation, and this is all on the flood ordinance. Um, these are requirements that, um, DCR, um, and P M are requiring to be updated and, and because, um, legal, I guess, um, they have changed their, our flood map, it doesn't affect um, if it were county, but it does affect some people in the town. Um, of course, there are a lot more friends of the flooding than we are. Um, the change is a free liner, but that'll be at your January meeting as well. And we get that information out to you ahead of time. Uh, coming up at our January meeting, we'll have election of officers, uh, review of approval of meeting schedule, uh, review of approval of bylaws. Uh, public hearings will be, um, the MHF properties, which is a silence parcel, um, and the flood ordinance that I just talked about. And we have had two applications coming today. We have, one of us had a chance to look at them, so I don't know if they're complete or if they're any things. Um, but one is to construct a hundred and eighty multifamily apartments. Uh, that, that'd be all of, um, thirty. Um, and then we want to call it carriage homes, which would be all of Sheldon, or seventy, um, upstairs. Their names, their names.
Are they part of the same project or are they two?
Two of them projects.
Ms. Graham. You said you did a public hearing on the MHF, they're talking about the sand insurance.
Sand insurance. They pretty much got everything and they've gone through the, the whole thing, listen.
I respect those, of course, that we talked about that, um, I didn't hear some real heads. Um, we're still on there for traffic impact analysis, and the traffic impact analysis is going to require a lot of changes. Uh, we should have all those changes in hand before we schedule that, and I don't expect that.
We do have a traffic, traffic impact analysis, and we have comments back from the.
You have the last comment back from the latest.
So, um, I mean, there, there may be a couple of things that we may want to address, um.
And we, we have not looked at, among such names as. Just a minute, the, the zoning map doesn't have sidewalks in it. That's, that's got to be addressed. We have, um, maybe issue with the particular sections to the different streets that we have, which is good, so that's not. That, that may be in the traffic analysis, that was returned because that was one question. We have not, um, addressed things like, um, park recreation, uh, open space, uh, those things are not addressed.
We have everything that they have submitted, um, we will get that to you all. I was hoping to have it to you all tonight, um, but that did not happen. Um, but we will get that to you next week, um, or we just start to review.
I mean, we haven't said, help parent, you wouldn't have done in January, the next day.
Yeah.
I just don't see that, I just, I don't think this planning.
Ms. Graham, question, um, with, what you've seen of the, uh, of their plan, um, is, is it all to, is it in agreements with, with our ordinances and, um, is it correctly?
We have gone through it, then they have checked everything that is in our ordinance, um. Of course, you know, there's, there's probably the recommendations, um, the planning commission will have. That's still what they may want to add or change. They'll, they'll, they'll go forward.
Otherwise. How much can we control if they had dotted all around as across their Ts? How much can we direct them or, I mean, I'm sure that we can make recommendations, but how much can we actually make them change with, with, if it's acceptable according to the whole brand or shape?
They have everything and they're in compliance, um, we could certainly, I mean, you've got the choice to either approve, deny, or table it, um. You can certainly be saying, I don't think there's enough. I don't know, just use this as an example, recreational facilities, um, for the size of developments you have there, um, and then PBB calls for it to be a walkable pedestrian friendly environment, to see that they don't have enough of that there. So I will look at it for, you know, any, anything which you think they need to add or change or.
Mr. Chairman, pardon me, Mr. Wagner brought up something that, um, I saw as trying to make its way back into the zoning ordinance. And I just want some clarification on that, that is sidewalks. Is that specific to this development or is that countywide?
Countywide and like major subdivisions and therefore, we do require sidewalks.
But not, not alone the TCO or, or commercial?
It's not in the TCO area, they have to provide an additional ten foot for roadway and property improvements.
Yeah, I just, in, in the package, I saw that the sidewalks were back in there. Um, and I'm just, I was kind of unclear how that made it back in there.
We, we talked about that prior to the meeting a little bit, oh.
Was that a typo or did that?
We kind of were modeling a little bit of this from another ordinance, so that's what I came up.
Okay, so I mean, I, I certainly, just to be clear, I mean, the neighborhoods, the HUDs, obviously, commercials and other discussion, but I just didn't hope it was specific to this project or if it's just, again, but you cleared it up, that's just something that got in there that will be taken out.
Oh.
As, as a part of the HUD department. Um, if, if, with the minimum local community, and with commercials development, that should be available to this community. Very available to the local community there, then we could put sidewalk along with this.
That is part of the, the five requirements that, that provide a walkable pedestrian friendly community, so we need to.
The, the sidewalks, maintaining those sidewalks, whose responsibility would that become?
If it's within the development, um, it's probably going to be them, if it's out along three sixty. Um, I would have to check, but I'm sure we got it.
If it's within, I believe it is, within the right of way, within the development, within the right way. Yeah, I believe what you've got there, and so, we won't, there are issues there, we do not, actually. But the.
And that's what I'm saying, keep it out of the right way, that's what they said involves, keep it out of the right way.
Good.
They're going to say, keep it out of the right way, that's what they said involves, or we can, it's right way. But, yeah, that we incorporated in the TCO.
Yeah, that's.
Ms. Graham, in your opinion, with what you've seen of their, of their plan, um, is it ready for a public hearing?
I don't think we can ask them to submit anything over this time. They have checked everything in the apartments, or some of them.
And take a guess, sometimes, since.
Welcome back to the public hearing.
Any other news business? I do have, um, I do have one thing, and Sherry touched on it earlier, we do have, this is the last meeting that we have this year. So our first meeting of the new year will have some, um, some items that will be, um, that we'll have to go over, um, one being that, uh, we'll be moving on a new chair. So this will be my last, uh, meeting presiding, um, to this commission. And, uh, and I do want to just make a couple of notes and, um, and recommendation. Um, first of all, thanks to the staff and the fellow commissioners for, um, for your patience and support. Uh, with last several months, uh, thank you also to, um, Mr. Wagner for nominating me, um, when, uh, yeah, when, when that time came out back in June, um, and, uh, I've always been taught to leave, um, to leave a place there than you found it. Um, with that being said, um, one recommendation I would add is I've noticed that, um, the past several months, it seems that there's lots of discussion that happens outside of our meetings, um, with staff members, um, amongst each other, and I feel like, um, sometimes those topics make it into an agenda, or at least I, I feel like I've seen agenda items that, that just, you know, to me anyway, I'm not, come, come out of nowhere and, and, and I, I just, I feel like sometimes we're caught off guard, uh, when we get into a meeting and see, you know, see what's on the agenda and there's things on there that we weren't aware of, um, and that's fine, those conversations I think are great to have, happen, but I think they need to be filtered through the chair, and at times I felt like That's fine, those conversations I think are great to have happen, but I think they need to be filtered through the chair and at times I felt like. I've not been completely in the loop on items and, and I think that. We don't look through the bylaws, we don't really have a communication policy or procedure in the bylaws. But I think for the smooth, well-oiled machine that our commission should operate under, I think that we need to have a. Well-thought-out method of communicating and keeping everybody in the loop on, on things. If somebody has a conversation with, with you, Sharon, I, I feel like either that member should. CC everybody on the commission, say, I, I had this, I had this, uh, conversation with Sharon, this is what we discuss. Uh, or, or vice versa, if, if you could do the same, uh, I don't know exactly what the language, um, on that should be, but I think that. Going forward, if I could leave this position in a better place for whoever steps in his chair after me. And that they have a system in place that they know and are confident that whatever topics pertaining to the planning department. They can discuss outside of our meetings, that that message gets relayed, you know, appropriately, uh, through and, and, um. I felt like maybe it's something we can add into the bylaws next month that would, um. That would give us some direction there, um, so that was my comment on that. Um. So all that I've got under my business, if you guys have anything else.
You have done an excellent job as chair, um, I, I think I made you a compliment. When I, I made you. Um, you can.
I don't know. So, uh, item number nine, uh, staff and special committee reports, Christianity.
We're still working on this, um, Andy's still going through his report and still under a couple of mine, so we'll get those emailed to you. It's just picking the first up, there's still some enforcement action we're going through and. I mean, some of the comments and things, so we'll email them, that's all right.
All right, um, violation laws. Uh, commissioner comments, uh, Mr. Greenwood, I'm gonna start us off.
Sure. He did make a good nomination if you've been sharing, I appreciate it, and you did a very good job for your first time. Call him real quick, so, thanks for doing it for us, and thanks for the people coming, it looks like we had a pretty big crowd, it was mostly for that one issue. Again, that's, that's good, we get people come in, see different things, they always have things working, we had a really good dialogue tonight, many things, so. This is one of them, really, well, except that we had to take this stuff, that's because, and some members are missing, I'm like, there's always, thanks staff, they always do a great job for us. Thank you all for all y'all's work.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, first and foremost, I think you have done a wonderful job and I commend you on that and, and. You've been very, very fair and dealing with everyone and very thorough and, and really investigating and, and I do appreciate that. Um. I do have to address, which is a good opportunity for me to do this, uh, when I was appointed to the planning commission in June. Uh, I knew it wouldn't be long until I was attacked. Uh, I was very diligent in providing Mr. Ashcraft and staff with copies of every property I owned in the county. Um, there was never no, no gray area there. That list is changing, so Mr. Ashcraft, I will be providing you with new properties as they come or go. So there is no gray area what I own, but I'm gonna reiterate to the people here and to the other members here. It was my sincere hope that given the current condition of this county, that we could all find a way to work together. Because there's things beginning to happen in this county that we're not prepared for. Um, there's a lot coming to this county, there's a lot we need to research, work together, be on the same page. And I still have a sincere hope that we can do that, not only the planning commission, but the board. Uh, the, the, the self-serving, the, the personality conflicts do not serve the citizens of the county well at all. But I just want to say to anyone who might be on Zoom, anyone here to the planning commission members. If anyone ever has any questions about what I own or what my motives are. My door is always open, my office is on Sharon Road, uh, I'd be glad to meet you down here anytime. Let's, let's not do it in the dark at night, that doesn't most well for the county, so my door is always open.
Think, uh, we're having some obstacles in trying to deal with. And that's, that's part of what we're. Those are kind of hard decisions to make when you've got two competing interest, interest like we had tonight. Uh, you want, you want to be able to satisfy each, that's not always. So sometimes we have to make some bad choices. We may have to do that when we, uh. Hear this, uh, talk about this again, but, um, I think staff has done a very good job and, you know, putting things together. I do appreciate the people coming out, I appreciate the folks that came from the subdivision, um. Coming in heaven or say, and that's, that's what we look here. Sometimes we should get a lot more people showing up to that, that big one, so, not just when some particular thing comes up. One in particular night, but, uh, at, at any time. So, you know, I would, I would look forward to us being able to encourage people to attend these meetings. And I'm sure we want to sit about this stuff, things the same way. But, um, with that, Sherry, I'm, I, I hesitate, I'm just. You know, I, I just don't think we're public hearing. Too much, too much of the things to be done, we have to have a public hearing then. After that public hearing, I think we need to do some. Real strong research on where we are with that development. It is a mixed-use development, the, the rules are much different on that. They are allowed to do much more, they're allowed to have proprietary offices, and we have, uh, we do expect it to be more. We expect, um. You know, the trails and everything to be there, we expect the community to have facilities for its citizens. Um, they put a road going into the park and appear to be using that as a way that their. Citizens will have access to our park, citizens do have access to that, their, their citizens, just like the rest of. People will be moving in that, but they also need to provide provisions within that walkable community that God. And I have provided some information on what a traditional community should be, um, something that. The board passed back in that two thousand and twelve, uh. No intention to, at whatsoever, and it's not required, but, uh, that is something that was approved by Viva. And without makes a mention in, in their response to the traffic impact analysis, so we need to take a good eye out of that. You know, I'm not blessing at you, I'm just disappointed, uh, I just don't, I just.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, um, I covered, so, the rest part, um, uh, it's been a, uh. It's been an interesting year and I think we've met some challenges, uh, we're still working through those challenges for sure, um. Yeah, it, it is nice to see some people attend, um, one of our meetings, um. Quite a few more than we normally have and I don't think people realize how much, uh, input from our citizens really does. Uh, impact the way we think about things, so I, I feel like every public hearing that we have had since I've been on this commission is. I, I come in kind of thinking how I'm gonna vote or, you know, see this through, you know, that particular hearing through and. And it always, there's always a curve ball that makes me rethink my position, um, on it and tonight was no different. Um, and, uh, and I wish more people knew that they, if they attended meetings like this. If they attended more supervisor meetings and they voiced their concerns, they would, um. Not advice, not necessarily completely, completely set, um, and, uh, and, and it goes the same, uh, with us as, as a group. Where we, we won't and we shouldn't agree a hundred percent on everything. Uh, we just become a group thing that just pushes things through and there's not good discussion. When there's disagreements, that's where good discussions happen and it's important that we keep our personality differences out of that and that. The, um, the arguments win the day, the, the better argument should, uh, should prevail and you can't have that type of discussion. Unless you have differing opinions, um, so, uh, I, I think that, um. I think that we have a lot to look forward to this coming year, uh, there's a lot of exciting things already in the pipeline, we're gonna have a busy first quarter. Um, and we've got a lot of work to do and it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be very interesting to do, so, uh. We're very much looking forward to that, thank you once again to the staff, um, and, um. At this time, we can go ahead and move on to the meeting.